Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Clickatap and Skamania Counties 2022 Primary Virtual Candidate Forum. Dawn?
Good evening and welcome. We're recording tonight's forum. This virtual forum is organized by the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Washington of Clickatap and Skamania Counties at Large Group. Joining us tonight are the candidates for Clickatap County Commissioners District Two. Matt Dumont, Rick Isaacson, William J. Morris, and Lori Zoller cannot be here at this time. This forum is an opportunity for these candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make a more informed decision when you mark your ballot. Make sure you are registered to vote. You can do that online or at any elections office near you. And now to get into the forum, my name is Dawn McSwain and I will be moderating. So that we can focus on the cabinets during the forum, the webinar chat function has been disabled. Welcome to our candidates this evening. Matt Dumont, Rick Isaacson, William J. Morris, and Lori Zoller. The candidates received the ground rules for tonight's forum in advance and have agreed to abide by them. The order of the candidates begin with the order of the candidates on our ballot. Okay, now we will hear from the candidates for a three-minute introduction. Matt Dumont, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for office.
My name is Matt Dumont. I'm running for Clickatap County Commissioner, District Two. My background, I am currently a farrier and a resident of Clickatap County for 22 years. Prior to my time, I worked down in Portland in the corporate world. Started with a company at 18 years old, worked my way through the company, did international sales for 10 years. I was their National Accounts Manager for five years after that. And then I was allowed to follow my dream, which was to have a small farm in rural America and raise my children. I am getting involved in the commissioners' race because I've been a little bit frustrated with politics lately. I'm looking for some honesty, integrity, some common sense in our, in our political, or actually our, representation for the county. I don't like using the term political or politics because as a commissioner, you're a representative. It's nonpartisan, you represent everybody in the county. And that's what I intend to do is represent everybody within the county fairly. I'm very skilled at negotiating challenges, managing a budget, and extremely nervous on a Zoom format because I've never done this before. So that's my background. And I don't need a full three minutes.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good. Rick Isaacson, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for office.
Hi, I'm Ricky Isaacson and I am also running for Clickatap County Commissioner, District Two. And like Matt, I will not need the entire three minutes. My background is in medical. I am currently a certified medical assistant here in Clickatap County. I am also a plibotomist. And I work in the different departments within the medical field. I also am currently a full-time student, decided to make a career change to get into the justice system with the goal of getting into government and into the, into police service. Living in the county, grew up in a rural, rural area. I like to interact with everybody. I get to interact with everybody in the medical field and just seeing what's, what's going on in the area. I as well, don't, don't really like what's going on and would like to get, you get, get a sense of unity and work with everybody and just be able to, I don't have a word for this, how to get, get, get everybody to be able to be in the same area and have total transparency within the government and not have to worry about what's going on behind closed doors. To be able to come to, come to the government, know that whatever you want is going to at least try the hardest to get, get the job done. That's why I wanted to run for the county commissioner. All right, that's, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. And William J. Morris, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for office.
Yes, thank you. I'm William J. Morris and I am running for Clickatap County Commissioner, District Two. And just like Matt and Rick, in fact, all three of us, myself, Matt and Rick, we've been hearing a lot of things over these last couple of years about how the, the populace is very distrustful of local government and government in general. And Rick has kind of hit on an issue about behind closed doors, backdoor deals, as they're called. And I got into this race because I deal with people across a tri-state area and also regionally, local regionally in what I do currently. And everywhere I go, I hear exactly the same complaint, and that is that people are feeling locked out of government. They feel as though their voice is not being heard. They feel as though they are not being represented by their elected officials. And that is why I got into this race. I am currently an elected official. I'm a Dalsport Water District Commissioner. Of course, I am in charge of daily, I oversee daily operations as well as annual budgets, as well as the entire budgeting cycle and personnel hiring and firing. There are three of us that are in that position. I also started my career right out of high school. I went to the Navy. I got some really good training. I then went to work for Pacific Northwest Bell in Portland. And during computerization and downsizing, I then went to National Medical Enterprises and then from there went around the world six times working as a subcontractor for very large corporations. I spent quite a while in Australia dealing with federal taxation, Australian federal taxation, as well as 46-country APAR and tax reporting to 46 countries around the world from Australia. So I'm very, I'm well tuned into money and how it works and how it works with government. But I want to come back for just a second regarding this situation. Absolutely everywhere I go, people have the same complaint. I'm not being listened to and I'm feeling locked out. And I'm, I've been a corporate trainer for the, over half of my career. And I do know how to talk to people. I know how to rally them. I know how to get them behind causes. And that's the primary reason why I threw my hat into the ring, because I believe I can make a difference with my, you know, with everything that I know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now on to our questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. Question one. Oh, excuse me. Before we go to the first question, a county commissioners' responsibilities include policymaking, budgeting, and management. We will begin tonight's forum with questions focusing on each of these areas. Question one regarding policy. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county? We'll begin with Mr. Dumont.
At this point in time, capital or spending in the county, there is not a great deal for us to work on. We have, our biggest problem right now is as far as improvements would be making it accessible for businesses, businesses to move in and be able to start some sort of business here. The infrastructure for that is really not in place and I think we could do something to enhance that, create some jobs and create some more business within our county. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Isaacson. What do you see as the most pressing need for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
For the projects, I could see the, the roads need a lot of work in the county. The, the guys that are doing the work do great, do great work, but the, they need more money, they need more equipment, they need to be able to get, get the, get the job done more. And also, I agree with that, definitely need to get some more businesses in here, need to find a way to help them out. Possibly give them tax breaks to get them to come in, get them, get people out there spending, spending the money to encourage them to come, come forward. That, that's the two biggest ones that I could think of to, for that question. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. And now, Mr. Morris. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
There's actually two that need to go in combination with one another. Interconnectivity in this county is abysmal at, at most. It is absolutely shameful that absolutely limited to no cell service in Glenwood and other areas across this county. This is one of the reasons why people do in fact feel so disconnected. But we live in the modern world, you know, we're in the 21st century and we should have high-speed internet across this county as well as good, and I, and I mean good, not poor, but good connectivity with cellphone, with, with cellphone services. It's all fine and dandy along the river and up the major highways, but you get beyond that. And we have existing contracts currently with vendors that have not been activated or, or completed. And it's
Okay. Unfortunately, your time is up. Thank you. Question two, what policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage broader employment in Clickatap County? We'll start with Mr. Isaacson.
Boy, that's a can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Nope, not a problem. What policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage broader employment in Clickatap County?
That goes back to getting more businesses in, we needed more variety of jobs for, for the county. You know, right now we have, you know, the, the landfill is outside. Then we got the, you know, the county jobs, then we got a lot of low, lower paying jobs. We need to get some higher paying jobs into the, into the county to get more people to want to work here. A lot, a lot of people want to go to work in Oregon because there's a lot more to choose from, but then have to pay the Oregon taxes to go do so. So to get more people working in the county, not have to pay those Oregon taxes, we, we need to create the jobs to get them over here. Okay.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Morris, what policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage broader employment in Clickatap County?
I think the first thing is, is that the Board of County Commissioners needs to be needing at a minimum quarterly with the Port of Clickatap Commissioners. We, we have a major facility over here in Dalsport. We also have one in, in Benjen, Port of Clickatap, Benjen, Port of Clickatap, Dalsport, and there's also Port of Clickatap in Alderdale as well. We, we need to be encouraging the Port of Clickatap to get out there and start recruiting companies to move here. And the commissioners along the Board of County Commissioners as, as well as the Port Commissioners, we need to be hanging a sign out there that says Clickatap County Open for Businesses, for Businesses. In the past, there has been four major companies that were essentially run out of here all because of noise and/or other pollution complaints about it. And one of them was the Walmart Transfer Center that went up into
I'm sorry, you're out of time. Thank you. And now for Mr. Dumont. What policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage broader employment in Clickatap County?
Well, I think I'm going to start with the investment portion of it. The investment would be specific to the businesses we're trying to bring in. I think the way we're going to be able to do in businesses is to have more open negotiations with these people. We don't need to necessarily invest in anything upfront as much as we need to invest in the negotiation to bring people in and have them, have them have a desire to come to Clickatap County. Once we have that and have some interest, then we can address what changes we needed to make or investments we need to make in infrastructure. But to go in and say we need a blank investment, at this point, I would say it's a hard, it would be a hard decision to say that without knowing what's coming our way. So it's more about the negotiation and bringing people in to talk to people of Clickatap County. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three, moving now to the budgeting responsibilities of county commissioners. Please share your experience preparing or authorizing budgets and we will start with Mr. Morris.
Yes, thank you. At the Dalsport Water District, I chaired, in fact, last year I chaired the Community Budget Committee, the Public Budget Committee, and then I was also chairman on, of the budget at the Dalsport Water District Commission. But I have also managed up to $20 billion with Vicar Industries in international budgeting across the 46 countries. And that, of course, was what, seven years? I did that seven or eight years, actually. And I've also been responsible for the subcontracting budget for Zillow.com across the entire state of Florida. And that was about a $2 billion budget that I handled just for the subcontractors. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Zoller. Please share your experience preparing or authorizing budgets.
Mr. Zoller?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Make sure it's the right person.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dumont.
Okay. Of course, my current budget, I've got a small business here in Clickatap County that I manage very well. Prior to that, it was in the company I worked for, Warren Industries, where I managed and was responsible as their National Accounts Manager for, it was about a $15 million budget. Keeping that intact. As far as budgets go, the, the size is not as material as the approach. You want to keep a balanced budget and keep, keep your spending at a minimum. Don't overspend, obviously. So basically, that's my budget experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Isaacson. What's your experience preparing or authorizing budgets?
Up. My experience with budgets is more of a personal budgets, you know, keeping, keeping the budget, being a full-time student. Paying for school, paying for everything else, working for business. My father has a small business in the area. When it was early on, I did help, help him with the, with the books for that. It was really small, so it wasn't, it wasn't a very large budget. But, you know, I did have experience with doing that. But that's, that's all I have, wasn't a whole lot of experience with that, but I do keep everything afloat. Get everything paid on time, get, get all the bills paid, pay for school, pay for gas, and everything keeps trucking along. I, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, question four. If new resources were available, what one area of county services would you feel most needs additional resources? We will start with Mr. Dumont.
Well, if this actually comes back to Mr. Morris's comments earlier, if we had additional money for additional resources in this county, it would be in the internet or, and cellphone type as far as putting towers and infrastructure in to better communicate over, you know, over the internet and I know, for example, I have to use Starlink because I do not have internet. I don't have cellphone service at my house. That would be the, the number one thing that would help us with infrastructure in this, in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Isaacson. What one area of county services would you feel most needs additional resources?
You know, I, I think we're all in agreement in this one. It's, it's cell towers. It's getting cellphone, it's getting everybody connected. Everybody that lives far out, you know, you got satellite and if you're even lucky to get that, it, it doesn't work. It'll go in and out. I'm lucky enough, you know, to live in town and, you know, I got the one, one choice, which is CenturyLink, and sometimes that goes just in and out spotty. You get more choices, get more towers, get, get, get everybody the help that they need. You know, everybody deserves internet. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Morris, what one area of county services would you feel needs the, needs additional resources?
Well, I want to point out that, you know, Matt has talked about this negotiation with these, with companies and while, while lighting the cellphone people on fire, Rick makes a good point about internet up and down all the time because the reliability, even here in Dalsport, isn't all that great. But beyond those two particular things, we have an aging population and we need to be looking out for seniors. Because there needs to be a focus on this assisted living that's, they're attempting to build down in white salmon. Because as our population ages, we need, we need care facilities for individuals. Every last one of them over in Oregon is absolutely full right now. And you know, our demographics just continue to age by the minute. And so if there were additional resources beyond internet and phones, I, I say senior services and assisted living in the county.
Thank you. Question five. Now we'll move to the management responsibilities of county commissioners. What experience do you have managing employees? Share your philosophy on how to successfully work with a diverse group of people. And we will start with Mr. Dumont.
Well, let's see, my experience in managing employees, I don't really enjoy it. That's how I became a farrier, actually, because I did not want to have employees. However, my previous job, I did have two or three employees that worked under me at any given time. My philosophy on dealing with employees, diverse people is simply they have a job. The job is defined. And then you allow them to do their job. Any background and any diverse population, if they have have a very good direction to go, they should be able to follow it and let them do their job. I'm not a micromanager at any, any point in my life, so let people do it. And then you deal with it if it doesn't get done. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Isaacson. What experience do you have managing employees? Share your philosophy on how to successfully work with a diverse group of people.
For the short time that I lived out of state, I did have employees that worked under me. And at the beginning of the day, we would set out what the goals were. Sometimes at the beginning of the month, depending on how far we're looking out, we would set those goals and then everybody would do their thing until there was a problem and then I would have to step in if needed. I, I don't, I don't like to look over people's shoulder. People know what they need to do, get that, get, get their job done. When doing, doing what I do now, working with the general public, you work with all kinds of people and the employees that I work with, everybody has their own personality, gotta know where, where to say something, where not to say something, but you always have to just, just let people just, just go and know when to be able to step in and say something to people.
And now, Mr. Morris. What experience do you have managing employees? Share your philosophy on how to successfully work with a diverse group of people.
My entire career, I've actually managed employees. And my philosophy is, is that there are no hidden expectations. All of my team members in my entire career have known exactly what is expected of them. They do eight hours of work for eight hours worth of pay. And if assigned, if assigned a duty or a job, they're expected to complete it. If they can't complete it within the assigned timeframe, then they need to come back and ask for an extension. Throughout my entire career, I've only ever had to fire one person, believe it or not. And, and I, I think that that is because of my philosophy that you talk to your employees, have a conversation with them, find out what is going on with them. If they are failing or not meeting expectations, then, then sit down and have a lengthy conversation with them and help them win. Help them be a winner.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Finally, our county and its citizens begin the next decade. Please share your vision of Clickatap County in the coming years. We will start with Mr. Morris.
I think that one of the things that needs to happen here, especially when we were talking about how to get jobs into this county, sitting down with the Port Commissioners, hanging the open for business sign out and heavily recruiting companies like Toyota, who are currently about to spend $3 billion in hydrogen technology. We have that renewable resource right at our hands in three locations without, within Clickatap County that are serviceable into the markets that hydrogen would need to go into, that Toyota wants to place hydrogen vehicles in, as well as Toyota is developing a hydrogen tractor. And so you know, this is just one of multiple opportunities that Clickatap County is well-positioned for. We just need to get them on the phone. Thanks.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Dumont. As our citizens begin the next decade, please share your vision of Clickatap County in the coming years.
Well, my vision of Clickatap County is maybe a little bit different. People move to Clickatap County because the low property tax, the low cost of living, a chance to find a rural lifestyle and a rural existence. Changing it in a great deal would change why people move here or come here in the first place. I like what our county is today. The only thing that I could see is creating, coming up with ways to create jobs to, to hold some of our youth in the county. Because right now, we have kids, they come out of high school, they graduate, head off to college or head off to a job somewhere else because there's nothing for them here. And so my vision would be to have a county where we could hold our young or youth and still have the lifestyle that everybody's moving here for. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Isaacson. As our county and its citizens begin the next decade, please share your vision of Clickatap County in the coming years. Please share your vision of Clickatack County in the coming years.
I am with Matt and ma'am in the fact that I also see the county. Holding on to its rural roots. The, the county now, this is why people want to move to the area and they want to get away from the cities. They want to have the rural lifestyle. However, you know, everybody, everybody keeps moving in, that lifestyle could be put into jeopardy. So we need to find a way to. Balance with the new, new incoming people and the existing residents of the county. And I'm sure that can be found. We also need to keep that rural lifestyle while bringing in the businesses. And by doing so, I believe we can, we can do, we can do that, we can maintain that lifestyle. And then with keeping the total transparency with our local government, everybody can be happy and living in the gov- living in the county together. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Now, each candidate will have one minute to close. You may use this time to clarify anything that was said during the forum. We will start with Mr. Morris.
Thank you. I, I think that there is a negotiable um, happy medium here. We have urban growth boundary areas that have not been uh, targeted for and, and or uh. Building projects shifted over to those particular areas. They're specifically designed for that. We have port areas that are standing essentially abandoned. There is a happy medium here. We can in fact keep our lifestyle. We can put jobs into the ports. But we, we can build a vibrant economy in this county. We should not be relegating businesses to go to Oregon. Because we need to say we're open for business. I was forced out of this county when I graduated high school because there were no jobs there. And, and coming back as a semi-retired person, I still see the same problem. Matt is absolutely right, the same problem certainly exists. It's why we busy on it. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Isaacson. You have one minute to close. You may use this time to clarify anything that was said during the forum.
We, we live, in my opinion, the greatest county in Washington State. We have every, everything you ever want. And we can go walking in the woods, we can go walking down the street without any issues. We can, we can do just about everything we want here. Yes, we, we need to boost the economy here. Yeah, we have a bunch of land that. Down on the porch, everything, every, everything could be used. We need to bring in those businesses. We need to keep our young people here, yet we, we need to keep our rural area. We, everybody needs to. We need to find a way to use all these resources, use, get all these businesses and keep, keep Clickatack County vibrant. Keep, keep Clickatack County in our rural area and everybody work together, we can get that job done. And we can keep this area as great, as great as it is now. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Demont. You will have one minute to close. You may use your time to clarify anything that was said during the forum.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to close by saying. More along the lines, I'm running for county commissioner because of these things that can be changed. I want to see a commissioner spot that is held up by honesty. Ethics, values, things that the county stands for. I want to see the people of this county represented and if you look, we are so diverse in this county from one side to the other. If you're on the west side, it leans one direction. If you're on the east side, it leans another, but everybody in this county needs to be represented. My goal in this run for county commissioner is to be able to rep- represent everybody in some fashion or form. Of course, everybody doesn't get, always get their way, but everybody needs to be represented. And that's why I'm doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our questions for this evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, we wish to thank all the candidates for their willingness to serve their community. And for their participation in tonight's forum. Tonight's recorded coverage will be available on YouTube and the League of Women Voters Facebook page. Be sure to head to vote four one one dot org if you need any other election information. And please remember to mark your ballot and return it in time to be counted in the primary election on August second. Thank you.